August 4th, we had to reschedule because of power outages caused by the tropical storm that blew through. Thank you. I guess we just have one member of the public on, Russ Frank. For those of you who are watching this on our YouTube channel, and if you have a question to ask, feel free to send an email to info@eastgoshen.org. Again, info@eastgoshen.org. And we'll read that question out to the appropriate time. For each, the public will be muted during the meeting when the board is talking. For each agenda item that requires a board vote, the public will be unmuted and given an opportunity to comment and ask questions. Participants wishing to comment must state their name and speak one at a time. And that's all I really have.
John, I don't want to make an issue of it, but can anybody else here, John, besides? I can't. I don't know what you said, John. But it doesn't matter. I know what you're saying, but I didn't hear it.
Marty, you're coming in very clear. I think it's important, depending on what device we have, to make sure you're speaking close enough to it. The masks also muffle things a little bit. I could hear John better than initially, but I think there's going to be a couple of times you're going to just have to bend over as close to wherever the mic is as you can, John. And Rick, I think it was the same thing. You were a little bit muted when you were talking a few moments ago, too.
Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. This is the Tuesday, August 11th, meeting of the Board of Supervisors, which is the carryover from last week with the power outages. I would ask everybody to join along with me with the pledge allegiance to the flag, followed by a moment of silence offered by David Shuey. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask that we observe a moment of silence for our emergency services. Those that work in the healthcare industry that go in harm's way with our current COVID situation. Those who serve in the military and those who serve in our fire companies. I'm going to ask a special moment of silence this evening. While we acknowledge the life and career of Bob Feel, who passed away last week after a long illness. Bob served with the Goshen Fire Company for nearly 60 years. During his long career with Goshen, he served as the Assistant Fire Chief, the Fire Chief, and the Chief Engineer. He also served on the Board of Directors, and he was a member of the Fire Police. Bob was legendary for his ability to fix almost anything that was broken. The township is thankful to Bob and all the long-term Fire Company volunteers who have worked heroically to ensure that East Goshen remains one of the safest communities in the Southeastern Pennsylvania. Our sincere sympathy goes to his wife Linda and their entire family.
Thank you very much. That was very nice. There is a chairman's report. Well, no, I got announced that the meeting will be live streamed on YouTube, as it always has been. The public hearing will be at the end, as John outlined. As far as the chairman report is concerned, we met in an executive session on June 28th to discuss a legal measure matter. And there's a presentation that says regarding the fire and EMS strategic plan. I think that's just the information that we have that says, that gives the dates that everybody's invited to attend this. And a little description of what it's going to be about. John, do you want to say anything, or do you want me to?
No, Marty, I think that that's self-explanatory, but I think Michelle wants to make a comment about the chairman's report.
So Marty, with all due respect, I just want to make a comment here just to clarify things. Because on July 27th, the board met to discuss information related to the collective bargaining agreement with the police association. And on July 28th, we met to discuss a pipeline legal matter with pipeline solicitor. I just wanted to make sure that it was clarified. That's all.
Good. Thanks, Michelle. Yeah, that was good because we added the Tuesday.
Susan, I always see half the group, and I can't hear anybody. Just in case it matters.
Okay.
Next is the emergency services report. Is Carmen here?
No, he's not on the line.
Okay, very good. Thank you. That took care of a problem that we were going to have, but that's all right. There's no financial report. With respect to the minutes of July 21st, I have read them a couple of times, several times. As a matter of fact, there, I want to commend John on doing a really nice job. As far as I'm concerned, there's no additions or subtractions. If anybody else has anything to add or subtract, we could do that. Otherwise, David, do you want to make a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes for Tuesday, July 21st, 2020, as presented.
Anybody want to make a second? Did somebody second it?
John just seconded.
Okay, thank you. Is there any comments from the gallery, Susan?
Russ, do you have any comment?
No.
No.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye, please.
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Five to oh, John. The next is the treasures report. There's a couple of treasures report all embedded in one. Mike, if you look at these.
Yes, Marty, thank you. I've reviewed, as we all have, I expect, the bills to pay dispersments. I did not have any specific questions on any of the immediate dispersments. I am going to ask John one question, though, if he could explain for us, for the benefit of particularly newer supervisors, the difference between expenditures that we approved, for instance, last night at the municipal authority meeting related to sewer, and the dispersments and expenditures that we approve under the Board of Supervisors under the sewer fund?
Well, the municipal authority technically owns the sewer capital infrastructure, so the sewer capital expenses are approved by the municipal authority. The money for them, however, comes from, transfers from the sewer funds that the board sets aside.
Okay, I kind of knew that, but I wanted to make sure that others did. Michelle, John, for instance, you may not know that during the municipal authority meeting, we approve bills to pay as well. And that explanation about the way the municipal authority operates, receiving its funding through the sewer fund, through the township directly, even though it's really an autonomous entity, still is worth understanding the way those dollars flow back and forth, and I appreciate that, John. I have no other questions at this point in time or comments.
Is there anybody? David, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move that we graciously accept the receipts and approve the expenditures as presented in the expenditure register and as summarized in the treasury report.
All right, second.
I'd second.
Thank you very much. Is there any other comments from the board? Susan, does anybody comments from the audience? Whoops.
I'm here. I was trying to unmute Russ. Russ, do you have any comments?
He's still muted.
Russ, I think you have to hit star six to unmute yourself. Zoom has taken the capability away from me.
There you go. Any comments, Russ, on the current motion to approve the bills to pay as a member of the public?
No.
All right, thank you.
Okay, is there a motion? Let's take a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. Is there a two motion?
Can I ask a question of John? All child, John, do you have any, it's August. Do you have any kind of updates on the impact of COVID on earned income and real estate transfer at all?
Yeah, so that's a good question, and things are starting to come into focus. So we still have, so the earned income tax dispersments hit on Monday. We have three more Mondays left in August. Usually, the last three Mondays are not so. They're not. I did some analysis yesterday looking at it. We've had good receipts, solid receipts so far this month. We're still going to be under budget, no question, but we're not going to be too far away. I think like finishing the year, $200,000, $250,000 under budget is probably, what I was saying right at the bat, is probably still stands. It's not worse than that.
Okay, thank you.
On the real estate transfer tax, we did get the August payment just yesterday or today, representing closings that happened in July, and those were a little bit below budget, too. But as I point out, actually, you'll see it in the next financial report for the next meeting. The number of certs for resales, as well as the new use and occupancy inspections that we're doing for resales is higher than it normally is this year. So we are going to see a bump in the second half of 2020 for property sales.
Interesting. Mark Gordon said that he's seeing increase and uptick in building permits. And I think people are, you know, in their homes, kind of looking around, saying, hey, we need to remodel this room. This room. So I think COVID put everybody in touch with their homes, you know?
Exactly. Michelle just made a good point, and one thing that Mark is talking about is there's been this huge, huge increase in the number of swimming pool permits.
Yeah.
And which raises its own set of, you know, public safety concerns. But yeah, there's definitely, definitely going on.
Yep.
And I would.
Yeah. John, the left side of the room, I can't see at all. So if anybody's speaking over there, I'm sorry if I overtalk you because I can't tell that you're doing anything. And John, I have to tell you, I can't hear you at all. So I just want to get, John, that we did take a vote before David asked the question. So the vote was five zero on the treasures report.
Yep.
If somebody's making a comment on the left side, well, my left side, it sounded like John Herzog. John, did you have something to say?
No, I didn't, Marty. Can you hear me?
Somebody over there did.
I'd like to interject at the moment. Marty, if you're not able to hear everyone effectively, David, are you able to, that maybe you kind of just take the gavel to keep things running? If Marty can't hear, and maybe if there's some technical issues, Bert or somebody's got to get over there and get Marty straightened out for the next meeting. Because if that's the issue, but I would suggest, David, if you can hear, you kind of take it. Marty, if that's all right with you, since he can hear.
Yeah, I have no problem. Let me see if I can get through this. If not, I'll just turn it over to David. Everything, there's no old business. The new business is, hey, guys, I have to apologize to you. I found the memo that I didn't, I was looking for for days. But nevertheless, the next item is item 11A, for anybody keeping score. That's, nobody's here from Houlihan's office, are they?
No.
Nope. Okay. Then they will go to 11B, which is the recommendation for the Boot Road Final Geophysical Survey. David, you want to handle that?
Yeah, at the meeting on the 23rd of the Pipeline Task Force, they unanimously made a motion to ask the Board of Supervisors to send a letter to PennDOT, requesting that Schnabel Engineering conduct the final geophysical inspection. The PennDOT required Sunoco after doing the two other geophysical surveys, they wanted a follow-up survey. They were going to have that Sunoco's own engineer do that survey. And the task force felt that there was a conflict of interest, you know, having your own engineer do that. So they're asking, they want us to ask PennDOT to have Schnabel Engineering conduct it. And so the task force, the motion is that we move that the Board of Supervisors authorize sending a letter to PennDOT, requesting that Schnabel Engineering conduct the final geophysical survey on Boot Road.
Is there a second?
I would second that.
Thank you very much, Mike. Is there anybody on the board that wants to make a comment about that?
I have a question, Marty. Can you hear me?
Hey, John.
Thank you. I just want to know, is this going to cost us money, or is this something gratis?
No, it won't cost us anything. PennDOT asked Sunoco to do the survey, and then they also insisted Sunoco Energy Transfer pay for it.
Good, good.
Everybody okay? Susan, you have anybody who wants to make a comment?
Russ, that's you. Do you have any comments? You just muted yourself, Russ. Do it again. Do the star six again. Russ.
All right, there we go, Russ.
There we go.
Nothing?
Nothing.
All those in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Is that five, it's five oh, I believe. Is that correct? Is anybody opposed?
No.
No. Okay, thank you very much. Susan, I think you and I have to stay after we see if we can square this thing away.
Michelle, clarifying question.
Who's going to get the result of the report? David, do you know?
Yeah, I'm not certain, because on the first reports, you know, as you know, we got the full report finally after doing our right, our Freedom of Information request. On this one, that's a good question. I'm not sure. You know, the report will go to PennDOT, and then PennDOT will decide who to distribute it to. In the past, it went to Carolyn Comit's office and a summary. So maybe we should include in our request that we get a full copy of the report, the township.
That's what I was going to suggest. That's a good idea, David. And you can indicate in the letter, John or Rick, as you write it, that if you, in such a request, you need a write-to-know request, and the township will follow through with that on the particular form. So I guess that's smart to include that in the letter and get it out there.
Okay, we'll do it.
Is everyone okay with that as an amendment to the motion?
Yes.
Yes, we are.
Yes.
Okay.
Is there amendment, whoever made the motion in a second, they agree with it?
Yep, friendly amendment, accepted.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please?
Aye.
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 Is anybody opposed? Five oh, John.
All right, good.
The next item is the electric vehicle charging station. John, do you want to take it, lead in that one?
Yeah, sure, Marty. So in response to the CADMS report, which had a number of recommendations around clean energy upgrades or improvements that all of the communities in the Westchester region can take to reduce their dependence on greenhouse gases. One of them was to install an electric vehicle charging station on township or municipal property. Last year, we did some preliminary analysis with this through our electrician, and the numbers, the costs were really high. But we went back and asked the company called National E Solutions, that's worked with Westchester, Euclid, and Westchester Borough on their EV charging station for revised numbers. And at this point, right now, from the settlement agreement with Volkswagen, if you might remember from probably five years ago, when Volkswagen was found to have falsified some emissions data, all the states got some money. Pennsylvania is using that money to basically rebate organizations that install public EV charging stations. So we can get basically $9,000 per charging station back from that pot of money. But that number is, that rebate is dwindling every six months or so. That number is falling. A year ago, it was $10,000. Now it's $9,000. But anyways, in order to get both, the actual stations themselves would have two plugs, are actually kind of cheap. But the electrical work that we would need to do in order to accommodate those EV charging stations is a little pricier. So net of the rebate, the cost of installing a station with two plugs at the township building is a little less than $10,000. And if we did it at the park across from the bathrooms near the playground, it's about $12,500. However, the EV charging stations do come with like a card reader, credit card reader. So you would charge for electricity. And in speaking with the sales rep, she sort of recommended that you not charge more than $1.50 per hour. These are very elastic price points, just the same way like a regular gas station. When people have on their phones, they have an app that shows, okay, West Goshen, it costs 75 cents per hour. East Goshen, let's say, is $1.30 per hour. Well, obviously, they're going to go to West Goshen every time. So we can't charge too much. And unfortunately, there's really no price point at which we could fully recover the costs, the net cost of the installation. The best we could do, if we were to charge $1.25 per hour, which is the recommendation of the Sustainability Advisory Commission, is just basically to cover the cost of electricity plus the service contract that we would have in place. So, I mean, what I think is really important to note is, you know, while EV charging stations are obviously the future, we're going to see more and more EV cars on the road. If you buy an EV car, you're going to install a charging station in your garage. Okay, so the people that would use the station that was at a public site, like the township building, would probably be out-of-towners, people who are traveling from New York to Washington DC, or, you know, and East Goshen happens to fall halfway between them. So it wouldn't primarily benefit residents. It would primarily, you know, benefit non-residents. So that's just something the board should bear in mind as it thinks through the decision. So at the end of the day, the recommendation that the Sustainability Advisory Commission had is to install a charging station with two plugs at the township building and to charge $1.25 per hour for charges.
David, do you want to handle that? I didn't hear a word that John said, so I have no idea what we're doing.
Okay, yeah, no problem. Just another comment. One is that, you know, we purchased our first hybrid vehicle for our code inspector. And, you know, there's going to be a movement, I think, toward plug-in hybrids in the future for the township vehicles. So the charging station at the township building could be used for that as well, and obviously, we would absorb the charge. And, you know, we're starting to see more and more electric vehicles. And this would be a universal, so we'd charge Teslas as well as other charging stations. So, you know, I think the Sustainability Advisory Committee realized that, you know, putting one in the park didn't make a lot of sense right now. They're looking at Westchester, West Goshen, Euclid are all putting charging stations in at their township buildings right now. And they've already approved them, so sustainability kind of backed off and said, we realize it's $9,754. So let's not put one in the park, but let's put the double charging station at the township building. And they recommended charging the $1.25, which does cover the cost of the maintenance contracts and the electricity that would be used, just not the capital expense. The other thing I'll note is that once the Volkswagen settlement money is gone, there may not be rebates available. So if we decide to do this in the future, it's going to be slightly less than twice the cost. So, so we can have discussion. I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the Sustainability Advisory Committee and approve the installation of a two-plug electric vehicle charging station at the township building parking lot, west side of the building. And set the fee at $1.25.
May I offer a friendly amendment to that motion? That would be contingent upon awarding of the grant.
It's not really a grant, Mike. It's really a rebate. There's no, there's no like, there's really no risk that we wouldn't get the money.
Okay.
You just know that you did it, and you get the money.
All right, thanks for that clarification. I would second that motion and open it for discussion.
Okay, it's Michelle. I love the idea of a charging station, but for $9,700, $9,500, that's just too much for me to be willing to put out there right now, because we don't have any electric hybrid charging issues right now. And while it might be something for the future, until we are actually purchasing plug-in hybrids, I don't think that we should be considering this. The only people who are going to benefit from this are going to be pass-through people. Maybe a handful of people who live in apartments in the township would be willing to come down and charge up that way. But I'm getting an electric vehicle later this year, and as far as I'm concerned, I'm not going to be charging here at the township building unless I'm here for a meeting. And likely, I'm not going to pay for it, because I'm already going to be set up at home. So while I love the idea of, the thought of it at least, I just don't think that it's practical to spend that kind of money right now.
David, I'm not sure what Michelle said, but I will say this about my own self. I think the idea is fine and dandy. However, as I have said several times, I do not believe that we need to do this now in order to keep the township going while the pandemic thing is going on. And I will not make any favorable vote for anything as long as we don't know what the pandemic is going to, when it's going to end, and what it's going to ultimately cost us. So I will be voting opposed to this, but I like the idea. I don't know what Michelle said, but it might be along that idea. But if it isn't, that's fine. I have to do what I have to do. And I think we've got to keep the township going, and that's all we have to do right now, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, the caveat is that if we don't do this and the rebates go away, it's going to cost us $18,000.
I understand that.
Dollars next year, so.
I understand that.
John?
I'm a no.
No. So call for a vote?
If nobody else has a question, is anybody in the audience having questions?
You have any questions?
Russ, you're muted.
Is he muted? Can we hear him?
I'm getting tired of this back and forth. It's not going well. Let's call.
I was leaving Russ unmuted, and he muted himself. Russ, you're.
Okay, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
I think I'm on now.
Yes, you are now, yes.
Russ, do you have any questions about this?
Yeah, I do. Considering that it seems like the only benefit is for out-of-towners. So, I mean, why would we, again, to reiterate what other people have said about this COVID issue that we're currently experiencing and not receiving everything we normally would receive, why would we want to spend money today for assisting other people from getting here to other places that aren't even part of our township?
Right.
And then second thing is, I'd like to ask is, you know, these electric vehicles, not only do they get charged electrically, but they don't pay any road taxes, unless that has changed in Pennsylvania.
No, it's a good point.
So, I mean, you know, Washington State is the only state in the country, I think, no, it's Washington or Oregon, I'm not sure which one. They're the only state that charges electric vehicles a tax at the end of the year based on mileage reported on their roadometers.
You're right.
So they're using, they're just, I just have the same thing with this $5 tax that we have to pay on our tags every year for road repairs. You know, this is, this is just, seems like it's just getting out of hand. And here we are, helping people out of our township to get from point A to point B. And they're also using our roads and causing more road erosion by them using our highways and not paying for it. That's the way I feel. Sorry.
That's good. Thank you, Russ. Appreciate the comment. Votes open, ready to vote on the motion.
Is all those in favor of the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
How many is that, two?
Yes.
All those opposed, aye?
Nay.
What, Marty, you were.
Three to two, if that doesn't pass.
Wait a minute.
Marty voted aye.
There was two ayes and three nays, right?
No, you voted aye, Marty, and it passes.
No, I voted against it.
You said aye.
Oh, I know.
Vote instead of David.
Too late.
I voted against it.
The motion passes.
We're just kidding, Mike.
We're kidding. We're kidding. Okay, the motion fails three to two. Thanks, everybody.
Okay, the next, the next thing, we'll see if I get through that, is the stormwater agreements. We had one that was in the folder, and John, you got to help me out a little bit, because I don't have that page. I know I don't have that one.
Yeah, so the one in the packet was for 443 Barker Drive. And then the two, there was three additional ones that Mark would like authorize for 620 Meadow Drive, 36 Sherman Drive, and 1440 Linden Lane.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board authorize the chairman to sign the stormwater management, operation, and maintenance agreements for the three locations that John just stated.
Plus the 443 Barker Drive.
Is there a second?
Well, the two, were there three or?
Total four.
Total of four, plus 443 Barker and the three additional that John referred to.
Is there a second?
Yeah, Michelle.
Michelle's seconded it, Marty.
Okay, there. Thank you very much. I can't hear you at all.
We know.
Yeah, I know. Is anybody opposed, all those? No, wait a minute. We've got to give Russ a chance.
Russ, do you have a question? Russ, Russ, do you have a question?
Yeah, um, I think this is probably a great thing to talk about, but what about the, um, the drain at the bottom of, of Gateswood between Pin Oaks and Marydale, that's always overflowing when it rains, is that part of this project?
No, these, these are all individual homes that have made improvements, Russ, that require, uh, erosion sediment control and then permanent stormwater management for any additional or particular threshold of impervious service added. So these are all privately maintained improvements, uh, and that's what the nature of the agreement is, to ensure that they are maintained once they're installed.
Right.
If Ricky's there, he can comment on the, on your other, your other comment.
Well, we'll get to that, but that's not the mo- that's not what we're talking about, though, so let's hold off on that.
All right.
Thanks again.
Rick can do it afterwards. Um, is there anybody else have any comments?
I just have two questions. Uh, I have two questions for, uh, John and Rick. Uh, Mark, I don't think is on the line, Mark Gordon, but, um, are the, um, are the stormwater facilities inspected, uh, at the time of resale, is that part of our resale cert?
No, they're on their own calendar, which is based on when they were put in.
Yeah, okay. Uh, how about, and how, just, uh, just briefly, uh, it may only be one sentence, it's okay. Uh, it could be your answer. How, how is the landowner, the property owner, reporting going? Uh, there's a semi-annual inspection by the property owner, uh, and the township, on a township form that's to be submitted. Is there good, uh, compliance with this and follow-up by the staff, if there's not?
Yes, yeah, we have, the compliance is pretty good because the, uh, self-reporting form is fairly easy. And if they don't comply, um, then we, we, uh, reach out to them a second time. And then, obviously, the ones that we have to inspect, uh, we just have the engineer to go out and do it, and then, um, we send the homeowner to bill.
Could I, um, uh, ask a question, uh, which would be self-incriminating, but I, in the interest of, uh, being fair? Um, some years ago, we installed a pool. This goes back now at least ten years when it was first starting up. And we were required to put in a, uh, a, 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 a pit, if you will. It's covered with river stone and we maintain it, of course. Um, it doesn't really do much, and that was an issue, but that, that's aside. I've not ever received a request or, or filled out one of these forms or agreement.
When did you install the pool, what year?
Two thousand and seven, I think.
That's probably the reason.
You're before these requirements.
Are you calling me grandfather?
Yes.
Yeah, you know, you, you're not required, we can't collect, but I can retroactively make you now comply.
All right, at least, you know, I've disclosed the fact, thank you.
Yes.
But we appreciate receiving, but we appreciate receiving your twenty-five dollars a year.
There you go.
Your grandfathered grandfather.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes care of that.
I appreciate-
Uh, the motion, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Five oh, John, thank you very much. The next is, uh, the famous, uh, two, two oh five dump truck trucks that Mark wants to sell. Does anybody want to, David, you want to make a motion and a comment?
Well, you know, John can comment on why we're selling these instead of, uh, through, um, munisie bid. Um, so go ahead, John.
Yeah, I mean, uh, you know, originally the plan and the Board had authorized us to, to dispose or to sell them on munisie bid. Um, however, in the, in the interim, in the last year, basically, Wallace Township found out that we had these, these used trucks, and we would like to purchase them for forty-five thousand dollars each or ninety thousand dollars total. Um, Mark would like to sell them to, s- sell, sell them to Wallace. I mean, I think, and so Mark asked around and talked to four dealers and, you know, determined that's a pretty good deal for ten-year-old, uh, dump trucks. So, I mean, I think really the question for the Board is, it's kind of like, uh, it's kind of like, uh, a, 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 a risk threshold. Would you rather take ninety thousand dollars guaranteed? Or, or would you maybe like to gamble that you get a hundred thousand, but on the flip side, you could only, also only get seventy thousand? So it's, it's really just sort of a, uh, it, it's just a question of your risk threshold.
And David, there was, I would say fifteen years ago, uh, we got rid of a couple other trucks, Wallace purchased them, and they've had good luck with them, so that's why they-
Well, but that's, the issue is really, we, as a township, we want to get, we want to be, get the best deal on our, on our- But it's, this is just like, uh, it's, it's, it's a classic, like, gambling question, do you-
But, but is there a, is there a Kelly Blue Book for dump trucks?
Well, I, no, I don't know that there is, but, uh, uh, based on Mark's core, uh, communications with, you know, the folks at Fred Beans and, uh,
Okay.
Oatsville, this is a really good, these are really-
In a separate conversation I had with Mark, just by chance, he feels that this is the most advantageous way of getting it, and we won't get any more money any other way. Well, in fact, probably less.
Right, the one thing to explain, John, when you reference, uh, the gamble, uh, explain the way munisie bid operates, uh, and not, i.e., once you put the, uh, the property on there and there is a bidding process that proceeds, you are kind of obligated to the high bid on that, uh, in that system, is that correct?
And moreover, Wallace Township as a municipality, like municipalities can't bid on munisie bid. So, so we-
And there's a nine, there's a nine percent buyer fee on sales under a hundred thousand, so-
Yeah.
When for a hundred, we'd end up getting ninety anyhow.
Kind of difference between an equity and a bond?
I guess.
Well, yeah, I mean, what, what, we may, we may lose on it, on an equity, uh, but with the bond, you got a fixed rate, and that's what it is, and you, you're guaranteed to what you're going to get. That's what my reference is.
Yeah.
I agree, uh, I'd like to throw this in too. Uh, normally, I would argue that we should put it on munisie bid, um, because that seems to be the proper thing to do, and that way, nobody's accused of selling to their friend. However, uh, during this coronavirus, um, probably a lot of the other municipalities are even more broke than we are and even more concerned about their revenues. And we might not get the, uh, the, even the forty-five thousand dollar bids because of that. And obviously, a, a citizen isn't going to come and bid on these trucks. It's going to be a municipality or something like that. So I, for that reason, and only for that reason, I favor taking the, uh, the, uh, private deal here.
Yep.
We ready to, uh, consider a vote?
Well, nobody, nobody, well, wait a minute, does anybody else have any comments? And, and, and if not, I gotta give Russ an opportunity to speak.
Mr. Did I make the motion?
Nobody did.
No, we haven't done it yet, but, but as long as we're here, we might as well give Russ an opportunity to make a comment, then we'll just take a motion and a vote.
Yeah, I don't have any questions on that.
Okay, let's, all those in favor of the motion?
Well, there's a motion-
Sell the vehicle for-
Marty, Marty, let somebody make a motion and then you can vote.
So, Mister Chair, I move that we, uh, sell the two two thousand and five Freightliner trucks to Wallace Township for forty-five thousand dollars each.
Is there a second?
Second. Michelle's seconded it.
David, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Five oh, John.
And if Mark Miller says a clean truck is a happy truck.
He does say that.
Absolutely.
These are very happy trucks.
What do you see your water bill go up with it? The new wash day. Uh, the next item is item eleven F, it's the radio booster ordinance. Uh, Mark is not here, so I assume Ricky's going to talk about that?
Right, uh, we adopted the ordinance last year. Um, the original deadline was April first to have their buildings tested. Uh, then along came COVID and everything went to, uh, you know, went to handbasket. So the staff pushed it back to August first, just to give people some breathing room. But clearly, there's, we have had several calls from a lot of folks, um, that are, they're still jammed up. So we're suggesting that we push everything back, the testing, uh, has the testing done by the end of this year, so it didn't require that they have until the middle of next year, uh, ju- next year to install. So essentially, we're just pushing everything back.
I'm certainly in support of that. I think it's fair to do that.
I'll make a motion, uh, that the Board of Supervisors authorize the township staff to notify commercial property owners of the administrative changes to the communication amplification system program due to the COVID nineteen that we're pushing the deadline to the end of twenty twenty.
Second.
There's a second, is, uh, any comments from the Board?
Yes, her point of clarification, we have, um, we have a discrepancy in the memo from Mark Gordon. It says that we have until June the thirtieth of twenty twenty-two to install the appropriate amplification.
It's eighteen months.
So that's eighteen months, to be clear, not the end of twenty-
No, they, they have until the end of this year to get the inspection report done, but then they have eighteen months to put them in.
Perfect, thank you.
Put them in, yeah.
Russ, does Russ have any comments?
No, thank you.
Okay, dokey, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Is there anybody opposed to the motion?
No.
Five oh, John, thank you.
Marty, just to let you know, um, Carmen joined us.
Carmen's too late.
All he's going to do is listen at this point.
I, I'm sorry, I had a fire-related issue and I just-
That's all right, that's all right.
Hey, Cor- hey, Carmen? Carmen, David did a very excellent job in talking about, uh, when he, when he spoke, uh, under his turn to speak. He did an excellent job, you don't have to worry about it.
And we, we, and, and you missed it because we just gave the Fire Marshal a two-hundred thousand dollar raise.
It's the story of my life.
If he was here.
Story of my life.
Well, we made the motion anyway, nobody was after the motion.
It was, it was five oh against. Uh, the next item, the next item is an item we've talked, that item we've talked about before. That's the banner, it's David's idea to move that one's area. I agree a hundred percent with him, but following in my normal, my normal thing, I will not spend any money on that now. It's not necessary to run the township.
Marty, um, I anticipated that, that issue, and, um, I donate my quarterly, um, salary, uh, as an East Caution Township Supervisor to charity event, charities. And I will make a donation to the Friends of East Caution to pay for that banner, I'll pay for the whole thing.
Well, sounds, sounds good to me. It's tough to turn, tough to turn down a money, Dan. I, I won't turn the money down, it's, it's fine to take the money. Uh, I don't know what everybody, I, I'm not so sure that, uh, I appreciate very much, uh, that you want to do that. Ricky, is there any problem at all with someone wanting to do something like that?
Well, David can-
Or John?
The first question is, does the Board want to buy the banner? That's, that's the question.
Well, at one point, we did.
Right.
I assume we do. I do, I think, I think David's got a great idea.
The question was, does the Board want to buy the banner? That's a yes or no question. David has offered to contribute, to make a contribution to the Friends in the amount of that cost, so, and they would then reimburse us. So, but they're two separate issues, but the question is, does the Board want to buy the banner?
No, I think that the question is, does the Board want to change the word from preserving the planning or something else? To be honest, planning is not my first choice, I would choose preparing. Um, because I think that's a more apt description of what our responsibility is to our community, and that's to prepare our community for the future, not to plan it. To plan it indicates that it's already pretty much just decided and it's, no. So I, I have a problem with the verbiage. I would say that this is one of those issues that we could put out to a survey of our township residents and ask them, which of the following three words would you prefer to use for our slogan on the banner? And then, we've also got the issue of the website, that would have to be changed, that's going to be some kind of a fee potentially.
That's easy, once we-
That's simple.
But the fact is, is that it's not just a simple, you know, that's, that's, you know, somebody coming in and saying, I've decided that we're going to change the logo and I'm one voice of eighteen thousand and five hundred. So I would, I would say there are two different issues.
I would also offer, um, to consider, depending on where this goes, and, uh, that's not a bad, uh, bad suggestion, Michelle, to open it up a little bit, this is, is a mission statement, and originally, as I understand, it came out of really the enthusiasm of a former supervisor where it, uh, kindled and took hold. And it was essentially one supervisor who came up with that, uh, kind of mission, and, and the, uh, the then-Board, uh, appreciated and, and bought into it, uh, which is fine. And it's, it's been recognized, and clearly, our residents, many of the residents know it because whether they are a supporter of something or a, um, in opposition to a particular item, it's been referenced many times, uh, since I've been on the Board about the relationship of it. And just like statistics, people can use them, e- any, in either direction, they want to support their particular position. That said, um, I would offer also the possibility of changing the former, uh, regarding the past. And instead of preserving the past, I would like to substitute the word preserving the past to respecting the past.
That sounds great too. So I think it's got, it's got merit for discussion, but I don't think changing it right now is, is appropriate.
I would, I could go with, uh, Michelle's recommendation, preparing for the future, uh, other than planning. Uh, you know, that's, uh, semantics as far as I'm concerned. So, so, um, you know, the idea would be then to, uh, it sounds like we're talking about changing it to respecting the past, serving the present, and preparing for the future.
That sounds actually a lot better, but is it something that we should be deciding, or should we put it out to?
Could we, could we do a simple, could we do a relatively simple survey over the internet somehow? What, what, you know, I, I'd like, Russ, I'd like to hear from Russ as, as his thoughts are-
Who, who surveys their employees to come up with a mission statement?
Oh, that's a good question, I don't know. I, I don't know.
Well, we did for Zig Sigma.
I think, I think that we can, you know.
Okay.
I just think that the trouble of a, of a survey, you know, change a couple of words on the, and this isn't even a mission statement, it's just a banner behind the desk, so.
Well, that's a good point, David, I use the word mission statement po- possibly erroneously, and I, I accept that.
Okay, me too, David.
Well, wait a minute, timeout, folks, there's, there's several of these banners around the building, and, and there's, and whoever, whoever just, I heard a part of somebody talking about, we're going to have to change the logo too. So, there is some cost associated with this, it would seem to me, you're, I mean, I, David, I appreciate the fact that you're talking, you're actually talking about the banner that's behind us i- in the building. Uh, but, there's all these other ones, there's at least two that I'm aware of, and then we got to change the, uh, logo.
So Marty, Marty?
Yes, John.
Marty?
Yeah.
We have the, the mock-up from Marsh Creek signs, so we can use this to, we can resize this and put it on the website. The only other place that this appears is in the, in the, the side conference room, there's the, there's another thing, but that's, doesn't get a whole lot of foot traffic, so as far as other costs beyond what's talked about here, there really aren't any.
And I'll take the other one from the conference room over to Kinko and have that done too.
And all of that said, I, you know, I didn't realize that it was just simply a mission statement that had been, it was a mock-up from before. Um, I don't have as much of a problem with it that way, um, I just didn't want to jump ahead and do something if it, it really did require more input.
Well, I, I agree with whoever said it, that with the wording of this has to be changed because if the wording stays the same, it doesn't, it get, doesn't get to David's thing until a second step. And I don't want to argue about step number one, so why isn't, whoever wants to make a motion, uh, make a motion so that it's encompassing in, in the mo- one sentence and, and be done with it?
What's, you can do that, David, you want to give it a shot and see if-
Yeah, I would make a motion that we change the, uh, the wording on the, on the banner to read preparing, uh, respecting the past, serving the present, and preparing for the future.
I second the motion. David, I-
Well, what are you doing about, what are you doing about who's going to pay for it?
I have a question. I have a question, Marty. David, uh, we see what you're going to do with this paycheck, and I'm still on the fence. What are you going to do with your next paycheck?
Well, what I do with, uh, seriously, what I do with all my paychecks is they're donated to the Chester County Food Bank and the West Chester Food Bank, and a couple, and a couple other local charities, I don't, uh, I, I've been doing that since I started.
You have my vote then.
Thank you.
Motion's out there, motion's out there.
We have, well, if, if, if the township's voting, if the, if the township's paying for it is one thing, with respect to me, I, I will not violate my, my own, my own rule. So, as much as I like the idea, I just won't vote for it.
Township's not paying for it, Marty, I am.
It's not paying for it.
No, it's not in the motion, it's not in the- No, it's not an emotion, it's not an emotion that way, David. It's got to be an emotion or the, the township's going to pay for it.
Well, you can't do that, Marty, because the way that it works is the Friends of East Coshen has to actually award the money back.
Well, anyhow, he, he can, he can tie it through the Friends of East Coshen if he wants to.
We're getting caught up in, in, um, in technicalities, if David's making.
That's right, that's, that's what everybody does.
All right, well, the motion's out there.
Marty doesn't trust me.
I second it.
Well, I trust you.
You need input from Russ. Russ, do you have any input?
Just mute it, Russ.
There you go, there you go.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't, uh, I think I heard nothing about this topic.
God bless you.
From your.
All right, so there's a vote open that was seconded, uh, let's do the count.
Aye.
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 Word of one, motion carries.
Motion carries. Thank you, David.
You're welcome, thank you.
Should we?
Even though I was nay, David, I thank you anyway, because it's, it felt bad about this. Okay, uh, any other, we haven't no any other matter, we were going to do the other votes under any other matter, so we go to the correspondence, there's a couple ideas, one was the fact that we didn't get the grant, and they asked us to continue to.
Marty, Marty!
Yeah.
I know.
Any other matter?
Okay, under, under any other matter, it's Michelle, can you hear me, Marty?
No.
Okay.
I assume you're talking.
To be safe.
So, um, under any other matter, I'm, I'm actually going to make a motion that we have staff work with the engineer in creating an access, emergency access road between Linden Lane cul-de-sac and Goshen Parkway. As it is right now, the residents, there are six residents that are in that cul-de-sac and they cannot be accessed in, in a, in a water emergency. Um, the fire truck can't get through that deep water, neither can an ambulance or, or a police, uh, police car. So, um, asking that staff work on that, and I'm, I did put a motion out there, and I hope you'll consider that.
Is your, is your motion for staff to analyze the issue?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I, I don't have any idea what the roads are, I have to go look at it, I, I, I don't, I can't remember where the hell they are, to tell you the truth, so I, I couldn't vote in with tonight, anyway.
Well, David seconded the motion.
David clarified, uh, what I was interested in, Michelle, and that's, the staff is just going to look into it and give us a report back as to how it would shape up. I think that's a low-cost, smart, uh, introduction to a possible consideration down the road, so to speak. And I, and I'm, I can certainly support the, the staff if they're able to take that on and do something over the next weeks or next couple of months ahead, if that, uh, Rick, if you have any comment on that?
No, we should be able to get an answer when it, get, we should get some comments back to you within a month.
Good, great.
So.
That's September, that'll be the September first meeting, Rick, right?
Second meeting, September.
Michelle, do you want to make a motion to the effect?
He did.
I did.
It's already done.
Oh, you did, okay, all right, I.
I seconded that.
Okay. So, okay, the, the motion is to do it, staff says they can do it by the second meeting in September, that's the motion. Uh, is there a second, does somebody second that?
John did.
John did.
Okay, then, is, is, uh, Russ have a comment about that?
Russ, you just muted yourself.
Uh, no, I don't. No, I don't.
Okay, all, all those in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Five oh, John, thank you very much.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you.
Thank you for, Michelle, I appreciate it, even though I can't hear you. It's, it's.
I'm so tired.
Hey, Susan, you got to stay afterwards, we got to figure out what's, what I did wrong.
We'll figure it out.
You know, I'm going to go to sleep tonight and all, all I'm going to hear is, Russ, you're muted and I can't hear you, that's all I'm going to hear.
There's two pieces of correspondence, one, they did not get us the grant, the big grant, uh, we're going to have to make a decision on whether or not we go for that same grant again or do something different, uh, if we choose to.
Marty, Marty, Marty.
We got the right nice resident.
Marty, it's Ricky. This was not unexpected, um, because we do not yet have the right-of-way or the engineering, but we do have money to acquire the right-of-way and the engineering, and the expectation is that if we resubmit next year, once we get them and resubmit next year, that we will get the funding for the segment. So this was not unexpected, we submitted it under the theory that if they said no, it didn't cost us anything.
Okay, okay, it's a beautiful thing, I'm glad to hear that, Ricky, thank you very much. Uh, that would, that would give us the ability to, uh, complete the whole, the whole section all the way from Monroe down to the airport road, so, uh, that's, that would be a great, that is a great grant to get, that's a big grant, and then, and that would do us really good, that's good stuff, I appreciate that a lot. I'm in favor of that, uh, we don't have to make that motion now, do we have to?
No, no.
This information.
Okay, I'm just acknowledging the fact it didn't turn out that way, Ricky gave us some sidebar information, which is great news, uh, the, the letter that's in there is that great letter that Mark, that the township received and Mark himself received it, and, um, I don't know if we got another letter somewheres along the line, it seems like we did from somebody else, but comment and, uh, comment and the staff when, when they're, when they're, when they're, they're working, so if I, if I, I don't have it in my packet, so.
John, you and I are in the floodville.
So with that, I'd entertain a, a, a motion for adjournment.
No, no, wait a minute.
Unless somebody has, unless somebody has somebody.
We have a, I think we have another letter, don't we? We do, from John and Clark.
That's what I said, there's another letter floating around, but I don't have it.
Right, you're right, Marty.
And, and moreover, Marty, we need public comment on any other non-adjunct item.
Yes.
Russ, you got any comments that we didn't give you a chance to make?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I got a question about this, um, this letter about the, uh, the segment B. I guess I just don't understand, when you planned this project out, starting back in two thousand and fifteen, were you aware that this may become a major issue in not getting this grant?
Well, according to Ricky, we're going to get the grant because we haven't completed two, two elements of it, and, and we were, we were, we were stretching out to see if we could get it this time instead of next time, but Ricky's pretty sure we're going to get it next time.
Yeah, but, but the thing, Marty, the thing is, you guys planned, had started working on this in two thousand and fifteen.
Yep.
Did you not know that this could be an issue? I mean, that's almost like saying you're going to plan to do a refinery turnaround, but you don't plan for the whole turnaround, you forget a, a certain unit, it's, I just, and it's amazing that this is coming up so late in the game.
Russ, every grant is, you're never guaranteed that when, when you start a project, that you're going to get the grants that you think you are. Now, we're lucky in this, this whole deal, it appears now with Ricky telling us what he told us tonight, that we're going to get all the grants that we thought we were going to get. So we're going to be right where we thought we were with respect to grants, but that's not a guarantee when you start these projects. Uh, now, it also depends a little bit of where people are in the universe of things in the county and so forth and so on, and it, and, and some people have greater input than other people, so, but the point of the matter is, I have seen grants that people thought they were going to get, not get, we have been lucky that we, in almost every circumstances, we have got the grants that we've asked for. Now, I don't know why that is, but it's, it's really nice that it happens that way. But we thought we were going to get this grant, and apparently, we're going to get it. The grants, the, the money that Ricky's talking about is not grant money, anyway. We were always going to spend that money.
Hey, Rick.
You're spending money on the soft, uh, the soft pro- part of the project, right? Getting the, getting the easements and all that, and the surveys done.
That's correct.
This is talking about, is this not talking about the hard cost, actually putting that piece of, uh, trail in?
Well, that, that, the, the grant would be to, for the hard cost for that segment, correct?
Yeah.
And that part is, as of, as of today, has been rejected, correct?
It was rejected last year, and it was rejected again this year, and the reason it has been rejected is because we do not have the plans done, and right now, we have, McMahon is working on the plan, and the other reason is we do not have control of the right-of-way, and as we speak, they're in the, the process of discussing the, uh, working out the prices for the right-of-way so we can make the offers.
Okay, so again, suppose you don't get the grant next year because the right-of-ways aren't done, the other things aren't done, this is not a hundred percent guaranteed.
And we don't do anything until a year after that.
Yes, and then if we don't get the grant, then this section of trail doesn't go in until we do. However, when we undertook this project, we put it up in phases, A through G, F and G, and each phase was done so that we can independently try and get one phase done, then another phase and work our way through it. So right now, we're up to phase, uh, we got A through B funded, and they're currently at pen dot under review. Phases C, D, and E are under construction by Alan Myers. Segments F and G have been completed, and we're in the process of finalizing the paperwork to get our money, our grant money back on those two project, those segments, and, um, and, and that's where we are. So the expectation is by the end of this year, we will have the engineering completed for segment, uh, C, A B, excuse me, and we will also, um, hopefully have acquired the right-of-way, and in which case, we will then resubmit for the multimodal grants again, and whatever other grants are out there.
I'd like to ask a question, the fact that we've, uh, moved as far as we have with, uh, actually what's in the ground and what's going to be completed, does that add more points to our, uh, does our, uh, our, our probability?
Yeah, yes, it does, and also the fact that, um, our trail, for what it's worth, even though it's wood chips, connects to Willistown's trail, and that helps, and last but not least, West Coshen's comprehensive plan makes reference to a trail that connects to our trail, which then gets into Westchester. So the fact that therefore we are now another segment, um, all help our, all, all help our chances of getting a grant the next round.
That's good to know, that's good to know.
Well, you, you have to bear in mind, this is part of the mid-trip, mid, mid, mid-county trails that the county has, not only will you get into Westchester, but you could take Westchester and get wherever, to, to Axton or to Downingtown.
Yeah.
Get run over.
When it's all said and done.
Well, the bottom line is, the train is in the, has left the barn, uh, I don't, that's a.
It's left the station.
Left the train, so let's, so let's be hopeful, we get some more points for what we've accomplished, and hopefully that grant comes through, it's a, it's a, it's a difficult section, we knew that, uh, and let's be hopeful that it, it happens, and Russ, we'll, we'll, we'll see from there, but I, I, I understand, uh, your point, but there are, uh, you know, even in local government, there are risks at, at times of, of not securing something that you're, uh, making an effort to, to accomplish, but, um, you know, I feel pretty good based upon the staff's, uh, comments here, Rick and, uh, John, and the work that they've done, so, but I'm hopeful.
Notwithstanding the fact that both Mark Gordon and, and Jason can write, they write beautiful grant applications.
Yeah, so let's, we'll see.
So, I don't, I don't think there's any doubt about that we're going to get the grant.
Before we close the meeting, I, I wanted to offer, too, that, um, uh, what, uh, I sent, uh, through to the board, the, um, some of the comments from the municipal authority meeting last night, but in, and in particular, I wanted to mention because Mark Miller was so, um, uh, gave so many plaudits and was so laudatory towards, uh, a young man who during the tropical storm, uh, stayed with the Ridley Creek sewer plant, our sewer plant, throughout the entire storm, to make sure operationally it was, uh, functioning properly and was there with direct contact with Mark throughout the storm, uh, you didn't see the pictures, but the Ridley Creek came very, very.
Uh, so. Did we have any damage to the plant, Mark? I, I read that quickly before I came here tonight, and I didn't pick up whether we did or we didn't.
There was no dam-.
Did we have any damage at all?
There was no damage to the plant.
No damage.
Wow, that's a beautiful thing. But the, but the young man, I don't know Matt's last name, but, uh, Mark Miller couldn't have been, he just, he, he couldn't, couldn't say enough positive things about the, the work and the performance that this young guy did during the storm, and, uh, again, there, I, I guess he gave a historical reference when there was a, another entity overseeing the plant, and there was some sort of a storm back when, it, it was not a good situation that, that occurred, but this time, with almost, I think it was eight inches of rain, John, if I'm not mistaken, that was recorded at the station.
It said seven inches, John.
Seven.
Said seven acres wide. Um, it was pretty dramatic, so, uh, just a, a real commendation for the young man, uh, and what he did for, uh, keeping the care of the plant during that storm.
Mike, should we send him a letter of appreciation from the township if it's that good?
Wonderful, I think it'd be terrific.
I'll send him one.
Ricky, can you, can you, you or somebody handle that? Susan, or whoever's going to write it?
I will.
Uh, that would be great, because anybody that does that kind of a job, I think deserves recognition.
Yeah.
And I appreciate, I appreciate, and everybody should read Mike's, or, is it your email? Anyhow, it's Mike's email, I, was it, was it your, was it your write-up?
John, uh, codifies the, the notes and we share them, and then, uh, typically, I try and get them distributed, uh, to the board, but, uh, um, I wanted to make sure I got this one through to you tonight.
Yeah, it's, it, I, I would encourage everybody to read it, uh, it's, it's not that